This meeting is called to order, the special meeting of the Board of Directors of the Valacitos Water District for Wednesday, September 28, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. at the district office. Next is Pledge of Allegiance. Could I ask Director Sinala to lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just for all.
Thank you. Okay, next is roll call. Please indicate your attendance. It looks like we're all here with the exception of Director Hernandez. Okay, moving on, additions to the agenda. I've received no additions, so we'll move on to adoption of tonight's agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
They're moved by Director Sinala, seconded by Director Pennick to approve tonight's adopt-- I'm sorry, to adopt tonight's agenda. Please vote. And it carries unanimously. Next is public comment. Persons wishing to address a matter not on the agenda may be heard at this time. I have one request to speak on public comment, Mr. Tom Skegleyon.
Thank you, Director Elatharp, for the opportunity to present. I started advocacy to increase awareness of subsidies paid by-- out of our water rates for development. And after I did that, Valacitos staff reported in numerous public meetings that Valacitos does not use ratepayer money to pay developer obligations. From fiscal year 2014 through August 31, 2022, Valacitos has used $14,484,295 of ratepayer money to pay developer obligations and has not paid any of that back. That's from a simple sources and uses compilation of your own reserve reports. Those are your numbers. At numerous workshops, staff said growth pays for growth. Growth impacts expansion CIP and related debt service from fiscal year 2014 through August 31, 2022 amounted to $73,951,369. Cap fees paid by developers and investment earnings in the capacity funds from the same time period amounted to $53,985,281. That's a shortfall of 20 million, so growth does not pay for growth. This information, again, is from the reserve reports from a simple compilation of sources and uses. I will be presenting-- do I have two minutes or three minutes? How much do I have?
You've got plenty of time. Keep going.
Oh, okay. Thank you. There's been a lot of other misrepresentations made at these multiple workshops that you've had. And, you know, what a lot of the policy of the last eight years has left us with is 73.1 million in debt. That's supposed to be the obligation of development, but you only have 4.4 million in developer money to pay for that. So then ratepayers, you've accumulated 108.2 million in ratepayer money. That's more than any other independent special district in San Diego County. I'll have two speaking engagements coming up. I want to invite you to one of them. One of them is going to be on October 19 at Palomar College's Political Economy Days. And the title of the presentation is "How Politics and a Lack of Ethics Costs San Marcos' Water Customers $50 Million." And it's open to the public, so please, I encourage you to come and hear the truth about what's going on over here. There's a lot of history. I hope to see you all there. Unlike the workshops, I will be telling the truth about in that presentation. And please, starting today, stop protecting the interests of developers at the expense of ratepayers. Two requests I'll have to add to a future agenda. One, please add a buying component to your cap fee. This is not-- it's just a simple calculation. It does not require a master plan update or a comprehensive fee study. Me and Mike Arthur can bang it out in a couple of hours. It's a very simple calculation. And it's cost not having it. If you would have had a rate in place when you were supposed to the cap fee, and if you would have had that in, that's about 21.7 million that that cost ratepayers. And that's after crediting back the annexation fees paid by developers. And then number two, and this is-- I'll finish with this one. Correct the denominator in your current capacity fee calculation to not include existing capacity. And again, there's no need for a master plan update or comprehensive study. It's just a simple correction. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tom.
I had a quick question. Tom, you said that you had two engagements coming up. What was the second one?
The second one-- the second one is Palomar. The first one is San Diego State University. I don't think that's open to the public. That's for the San Diego State University Beta Alpha Psi. It's an organization of honors graduate finance students. And so-- and that will be entitled-- it's a long title, but "Case Study: Why We Need Finance Professionals With Integrity In Government: How a Lack of Ethics Costs Public Utilities Ratepayers $50 Million." That's on October 12. The one that's open to the public is October 19. That's the Palomar College one. It's at 220, I think.
Are you including any representation from the Water District on that panel?
It's not a panel discussion. It's a lecture.
It's just your point of view and just your perspective.
It's not my point of view. It is all from facts. It is all from minutes, board minutes, like I did here with the reserve reports. It's not based on opinion at all. It is factual. Yeah.
I just think it would be more productive and maybe more transparent if you-- maybe you could go up there with a representative from Valacitos, and you could have the debate and share all these facts that you say.
Yeah. I've been invited as a former professor at San Diego State University, and that's who the lecturers are.
Just know that we're willing to send a representative if you'd like to have the other side of the story presented.
I invite you all for your input. That would be wonderful. Yeah, that would be wonderful. Yeah, that was the purpose of the invitation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, next we'll move on to presentations. We have one presentation.
Yeah, I'll take that, President Elatharp. So every year, public agencies are required to prepare and file annual financial reports demonstrating the financial positions of their agencies. Our annual report is called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The Government Finance Officers Association, known as GFOA, is the premier industry association in America and in Canada overseeing that. And each year, GFOA reviews annual reports from its affiliated member agencies for thoroughness, completeness, and transparency. And GFOA recognizes the agencies who have met all these standards established for the preparation of those reports. And their highest award is called the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And I'm proud to announce that Valacitos has won GFOA's Excellence in Financial Reporting Award for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021. That's the most recent year that they've actually evaluated because the report comes out after June 30 of the year, and it takes them some time to go through that. So this isn't the first time we've won that report or that award, but it does demonstrate that Valacitos is among the very best in the industry when it comes to financial management and transparency. So I think it's not just an opinion of staff that I think we're doing a good job, but I think industry professionals like GFOA have recognized it as well. So we just recently received this award, so we just wanted to present it to the board. So I'd like to invite President Elatharp and the rest of the board to come down and take a picture. And President Elatharp, I think you have a copy of it.
Do that right here.
So if you can come down here, and I'm asking Mike Arthur to take the picture. Chris usually does that for us, but he's not in attendance today.
I'd like to present it to Wes.
All right. If you want Wes to join you in the photo, I'm sure you'd be happy to do that.
Well deserved. Do your best. I'm gonna take a couple. I know it's most flattering. I go right. That's why Chris always downloads school because he's short.
Okay. Good luck. Okay. Next item. We're on to 1.1, public hearing. So, "Welcome to the Valacitos Water District Public Hearing on Proposed Increases to Water Rates." Before we open the public hearing, I would like to ask our legal counsel to explain the requirements of Proposition 218 governing this public hearing and the proposed adoption of the water rates and charges.
Thank you, President. Good evening. This public hearing was set in compliance-- Okay. Good evening. This public hearing was set in compliance with Proposition 218. The district mailed a notice of this public hearing to the record owners of property subject to the imposition of the proposed rates and charges, and tenants directly liable for the payment of such rates and charges, i.e., customers of record who are not property owners. The date and time of this public hearing is not less than 45 days after the district mailed the notices. The purpose of the public hearing is for the district board of directors to hear all oral testimony and consider all written protests concerning the proposed rate increases. It is also held to determine whether there is a majority protest to the proposed rates and whether to proceed with the adoption of the proposed rates. Property owners and tenants are not required to provide oral testimony at today's hearing. If you wish, you may simply submit a written protest directly to the secretary of the board indicating your opposition to the proposed rate increases. However, if you wish your protest to be counted, you must submit a written protest prior to the close of the public hearing tonight. Written protests may be submitted during the hearing by delivering the written protest to the board secretary prior to the close of the public comment portion of the public hearing. The public hearing will be closed after the district board of directors has heard and considered all oral testimony on these items. Oral comments do not qualify as written protests. If written protests against the proposed rate increases are presented by a majority of the owners of the identified parcels upon which the charges are to be imposed, or tenants directly liable for the payment of the charges, the district board of directors may not impose the rate increases. If there is no majority protest, the district board of directors may impose the rate increases. Pursuant to state law governing Proposition 218 and determining whether a majority protest exists, only one written protest per parcel may be counted. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing will be conducted in the following manner. District staff will first provide a presentation explaining the proposed rate increases. After the presentation, the district board of directors will open the public hearing for any person wishing to speak on this item. After all oral testimony has been heard, the district board of directors will close the public hearing and, if needed, have a short recess to determine if a majority protest to the proposed rate increases has been received. Only those written protests submitted prior to the close of the public hearing will be counted. If you wish to speak on this item, you'll be given a maximum of three minutes, so we ask that you keep your comments brief and to the point so that we can allow everyone a chance to speak. Our secretary of the board will be keeping time for each speaker. You will be notified when you have reached your maximal allowed time. To facilitate the process, no questions from the speakers will be answered during the public hearing. We will now provide a brief presentation on the rates and open the public hearing.
I'll jump in here, President Elatharp. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on or protest the district's proposed new water rate structure. The district last increased water rates back in March of 2020. That's over two and a half years ago. And that increase was about 3.3% averaged across all customers. Since that time, the district's cost of purchased water from the county water authority has increased by approximately 11%. And purchased water accounts for about 70% of our overall water budget. In addition, during that same time, generally coinciding with COVID, inflation has increased drastically. The most recent numbers show inflation at about 9%. So it's pretty high. So I think proposing a rate increase of less than 2% over a two-and-a-half-year period is a testament to the board's leadership, their fiscal conservatism, and staff's dedication to minimize increases in our controllable costs. Even with this increase, our rates will be in the lowest third amongst all San Diego County water agencies. And I think that's even more impressive when you consider that about 25% of our imported-- of our water supplies comes from the Carlsbad desalination facility. That source is highly reliable. It's of a superior quality, but it's very expensive compared to other imported water supplies. So we probably have-- Valacitos probably has the highest imported water costs of all water agencies, yet still in the lowest third in rates. Water agencies are not allowed to arbitrarily set their rates wherever they want. Part of the rate-setting process includes the requirement to conduct a cost-of-service study, and the purpose of the cost-of-service study is to determine how to fairly allocate the costs of providing water service to our customer base. And in order to do that, Valacitos retained the services of a consultant-- that's Raftellus, who specializes in these studies. And you'll be hearing from our consultant tonight, and that's John Wright. He's at the podium right now, and he'll explain the process in more detail. We felt it was important to retain the services of an independent rate consultant to ensure that the study was conducted properly and without bias. Raftellus is one of the premier firms specializing in cost-of-service studies in the nation. Most of the information the public and board will hear tonight is similar to what was presented back on August 3, and that's when the board set tonight's public hearing date. Since that time, staff have become familiar-- have become aware of some questions and comments from the public about a proposed rate adjustments. So maybe I'll go over those, talk about what those are. So some of these themes that came out, and one is how much are rates going up for the average single-family residence? What is the maximum increase for residential meters? Are developer-funded-- related projects funded through water rates? Why did we use the 21-22 budget and not the 22-23 budget in developing the cost-of-service study? And how much revenue is being collected to fund replacement and rehabilitation capital projects? So during the presentation-- during staff presentation, we'll be doing our best to address those issues. So just a few comments before I turn it over to John. First of all, the public will hear repeated references to a unit of water. That's a standard measurement in the water industry. It's equivalent to 100 cubic feet, which is about 750 gallons. If you look in the back left corner of the room, that PVC model demonstrates the size of a unit of water. That's 100 cubic feet. So when we say a unit of water, that's about what one unit of water is. So if you're using 13 units of water a month, you're going through about 13 of those through your domestic supply per month. So before I turn it over to John, does the board have any preliminary questions? We'll probably touch on specific questions in the presentation, but anything before we kick things off.
Go ahead.
Not a question, but before I forget, can I ask staff to reach out to Palomar College and see if we can get invited to that water conference that they're having? I would-- Palomar College is a public college, and I think they would want to have the public agency represented at that event. Thank you.
We'll do that. Okay, I don't see any specific questions, and so I'll turn it over to John Wright from Michael's gonna go to the next slide for me. Thank you for having me here tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about the cost-of-service study process and how Raftellus assisted the district. I think that you may have seen this slide at least once before, maybe twice, but it would be probably worthwhile to just go over it for the audience tonight. When we think about conducting a cost-of-service study for a water utility, really, there are three primary steps. And this first step is financial planning, and that is asking ourselves the question, what strategies are we going to use to determine how much revenue we need to cover our costs and make sure that we have revenue that's adequate to ensure financial sustainability for our utility? Once we establish our financial plan, a natural fallout of that is the revenue requirement from rates. The revenue requirement from rates is the amount of revenue we need to collect from ratepayers. And when we identify that amount of revenue, we then go into a cost-of-service study process where we allocate the revenue requirement to customers based on the types of demands they impose on our utility system. And usually, we would think of those demands as base demands and, much more importantly, peak demands. And that allows us to determine how much each type of customer should be paying so that we can recover that total revenue requirement determined in the financial planning process. And then finally, the next step in the cost-of-service study process is rate design. And this is development of the rates, both volumetric and fixed, that must be paid by each type of customer in order to ensure that we recover the money we need from them. And keep in mind that this entire process is done under the California Proposition So this is just a little graphic that looks at the cost-of-service study process in a slightly different manner. And the way we would normally start a cost-of-service study is to sit down with utility staff, oftentimes to make presentations to governing bodies, to talk about what the utility's financial goals are, what financial policies you have in place, what your concerns are about water use efficiency and affordability. And after we develop that rate-setting framework, we then, once again, as mentioned in the previous slide, go into the financial planning process. And really, a key issue for many utilities, and certainly for Valacitos, is what financing strategies are we going to use to pay for our repair and replacement capital costs? And this is costs that are not developer-related CIP costs, but the repair and replacement of existing infrastructure that does not add capacity for developers. And after developing that financial plan, once again, we step into the cost-of-service study and do rate design. And then finally, on the far right-hand side of this graphic, you'll see the final rate adoption process, which is where we are tonight. You know, and this involves the rate consultant developing a report, the utility giving notice, and then, of course, the public hearing, which is where we are right now. So oftentimes, rate consultants are asked, what is cost of service? And just to short-circuit it, the cost of service is a process where, once we determine how much the utility needs to recover from customers, it's a process to determine how individual types of customers, how much they have to pay. And they pay based on the proportionate demands they impose on the utility system. And so it is an alignment of cost allocation and then ultimately associated cost recovery from different types of customers based on how much it causes-- costs the utility to serve them, given the characteristics of their demand. That's probably it. Michael? Oh, okay. Lutfi is here, so I feel a little bit embarrassed talking about this. I'll give you the short-circuit rate consultant discussion of Proposition 218, and then hopefully Lutfi will chime in if he needs to. So what Proposition 218 does is it basically defines how utilities can charge for property-related services. And municipal water service, municipal sewer service, municipal solid waste are property-related services. And what Prop 218 does is it tells us that the revenues we require from-- or acquire from customers can't be used for any other purpose but to provide utility service. So we can't go out and fund affordable housing with the monies we get from ratepayers. We also have under Prop 218 a key requirement that the amount of rates that any individual parcel pays, the amount of money that we impose on any individual property owner, we can't charge them more than the proportional cost we incur to provide service to them. A little bit secondarily, that's probably self-evident, is the fact that we have to have the service immediately available and ready to provide to customers if we're going to charge them for us. And then lastly, the 45-day notice period with-- which Lutfi covered in his opening comments, we need to give 45 days' notice before having a hearing like this. So the notion of the cost-of-service study and allocating the revenue requirement-- now, what we're really ultimately doing is looking to design Proposition 218-compliant rates. And what you would think of at a very high level is two types of rates, two ways of recovering costs from customers. The first type are fixed charges. These are monthly fixed charges. In the case of this district, these monthly fixed charges are assessed based on meter size. And they typically recover costs associated with providing customer service, billing and collection. Meter maintenance costs are often recovered through monthly fixed charges. Another type of rate element are your volumetric rates, where we're going to be recovering costs of things like water supply, delivering water to customers, and possibly what we're spending on conservation. And so we allocate this annual revenue requirement into these two broad buckets.
And you'll notice we changed the bucket slide, so there's no pouring buckets this time.
I begged Michael to get rid of that bucket slide. I'm really appreciative that he did. So when you look at the revenue requirement for the district, and this is the amount of revenue that the rates that Michael is going to describe to you are intended to recover, that total revenue requirement is approximately $45.8 million. It is composed of really three broad categories of costs. Approximately $33 million for purchased water, approximately $13 million for operating expenses, and then $925,000 to pay for repair and replacement capital expenditures. Once again, the $925,000 is not paying for growth-related capital expenditures that is intended to serve new development. The $925,000 in your annual revenue requirement is repair and replacement of existing infrastructure that does not add capacity to serve growth. Those total costs come into whatever they do, and then they're offset by approximately $1 million in miscellaneous non-rate revenue. And this would be things like pumping surcharges, interest income, various miscellaneous fees. So when you take the three broadcast cost categories and subtract out the non-rate revenues, that's how we get to our revenue requirement of $45.8 million. That $45.8 million, as noted in previous slide, is recovered from volumetric rates, or here in the district, they're called commodity rates, as well as the monthly fixed charge, which here in the district is referred to as your readiness-to-serve charge. And you can see what that split is on the slide. Approximately $31.5 million will be from commodity rates, which is the actual amount of metered water consumption that customers have. And then $14.3 million will be from the monthly fixed charge.
So, John, can I just ask you a clarification question right now? We're talking about the $925,000 that's being transferred to operating reserves. That doesn't cover the entire cost of our capital projects, does it?
It does not.
And if we were to capture the entire cost of our capital projects, about what would our revenue requirement actually be?
I think your revenue requirement would go up to approximately $52 to $53 million. And that is approximately 11 to 12% higher than the revenue requirement that is being presented to you tonight to be recovered through the proposed rates.
So just to be clear, if we were fully funding our CIP project through rates, the rates would be approximately 10% higher than they are now?
My estimate is 11 to 12.
Thank you.
I'm a little confused now. So, Mike, are you saying that if we were-- if we were funding new growth through rates, that it would be 11% higher?
Our rehab and rehabilitation capital projects were about $7.6 million. So what we do-- and John helped me with this-- we don't look at one year's worth of capital projects to set rates. We kind of look at a five-year period and take a smoothing effect. Because, for example, let's say we were to do 10 million in projects this year and zero next year. We wouldn't want rates to go up to cover that $10 million this year and then all the way down-- and then all the way down to cover the zero for next year. So we do a smoothing effect. So for the budgeted year that we're using, there are about $7.6 million in total capital projects, non-growth projects. And of that, we are only funding $925,000 through rates. There'll be a slide at the end that'll kind of go over a little bit more in detail, but I want to make sure we're not talking about growth projects whatsoever in any of these presentations.
So Mike, the balance of the funding comes from what?
I do have a slide on that, so I don't want to give away the punchline. But I mean, needless to say, it would come from our revenue, our reserve balance.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sorry, there's a delay when I hit the button, five seconds, so.
Would Valacitos, Valacitos retain the services of my firm, Rafftelis? The objectives that were specified for the cost of service study is to really do a very detailed, comprehensive look of the district's cost allocations that were used to arrive at rates and the district's actual rate structure. And within that context, of course, what the district wanted us to do was to look at key financial and rate structure policy issues and really review your existing rate structure in terms of your customer types that are defined by meter size, in terms of your readiness-to-serve charge and your commodity charge. And obviously, the rate structure needs to be in full compliance with California regulatory requirements, i.e. Prop 218. The district was very interested in developing a multi-year projection of proposed rates. Lastly, the district was, I guess not lastly. Next, the district was very interested in making extremely transparent pass-through charges. Pass-the-ke pass-through charge for the district is obviously what you pay San Diego County Water Authority for water supplies. Lastly, the district was interested in the development of drought rates, which will be talked about here tonight. And originally, we had proposed to implement these rates on October 1st. While they're now being proposed to be implemented on October 1st. But originally, when we started this study, I think it was quite a bit earlier than that than we were looking for as a target date.
I think that's it. So that'll end John's portion for now. Thank you, John. I do want to thank John. So during this, we, November 2020, I think, is when we first engaged, John, and through COVID and everything else, it's been a kind of a battle. But John and I have been able to work through this and present what we are tonight. So I'd really like to thank Rafftelis's help on all that they've done for us.
And hopefully, this doesn't sound like a mutual appreciation society, but your entire staff, you know, and obviously Glenn and Wes, and also Michael, and I really want to give a handout to Michael. Michael is really an amazing analyst. I have offered him a job at Rafftelis on numerous occasions.
But you're not supposed to do that.
So I want to thank him for all his great work.
Don't tell us things like that.
So I want to go over the calendar real quick. So back in August of 2003, we had that board meeting to set the public hearing. And then we mailed out the public, the Prop 218 notice that hopefully everyone got. That set the 45-day window, as was mentioned. So here we are today, 9/28 for the public hearing, with hopefully the new rates to be in effect on October 1st. So real quick, some items to note. What's kind of different from this rating setting process than what we've done probably in the past? And John mentioned a lot of these. So we hope to adopt five-year rates that cover calendar years 2022 through 2026. We want to include pass-through charges from San Diego County Water Authority. 70% of our costs are uncontrollable pass-through through the Water Authority. What I do want to mention, so the last couple of years, the rate increases from the Water Authority have been around, and I don't know the exact percentage, around 5.2%, around 6.2%, somewhere within that area. So our pass-through charges, if, for example, you know, the Water Authority could pass through a charge of 9% next year, what the district has done to try to help alleviate some of that increase to the ratepayers is we set a maximum of 6.5%. So if the Water Authority's rates go up 9%, the district will hold it at 6.5% during this five-year period. So I just want to note that that is a benefit to the ratepayers. We also wanted to include drought rates. And that's to recover some of the fixed costs that we have, regardless of how much water we sell. If our, and I'll go over this a little bit more in detail, as our, if our water sales go down by a certain percentage, we still have to cover those fixed costs. And then what we also included was some of the property tax or discretionary revenue to help offset some of the tier-one, tier-two costs. There's a lot of guidelines we have to follow. And John said, we can't, you know, use money to pay for affordable housing. So there's certain things that we can't do, but there are certain things we can do with this discretionary revenue to try to keep rates low for our users. So with that, the proposed rates, we've seen this slide a couple of times, but I do want to go over it again. I didn't include all the meter sizes on here, but the overall gist is that for meter, for the fixed portion of the customer's bill, it's proposed to go up about 1.5%, and that's on all meter sizes. So it's prorated based on the meter size. Our most common meter size is your 5/8 3/4-inch, and our most common customer is a single-family residence. So what you'll hear tonight is almost entirely for that class of group, single-family residence, 3/4, 5/8-inch meter. Although I do have some data on other meter sizes as well. So the fixed charge is proposed to go up from $36.55 to, again, a delay, sorry. I have circles coming in. And I might have hit it three times, so I don't know. We might go to the end of the presentation, which you guys probably appreciate. The $37.07 for an increase of 52 cents or 1.4% on this specific meter size. So our volumetric are our commodity rates. Currently, we have the three tiers at $3.77, $4.75, and $9.18. The reason why tier three is so high is, in the previous study, all the desal costs were passed on to the tier-three customers. But General Manager Perlmont mentioned that the desal is a supply reliability that benefits all customers. So what our current rates study did was incorporate the desal costs throughout all tiers. So for the proposed rates, we've mentioned that the discretionary revenue we're using to offset some of the costs for tier one. So tier-one rates will be held constant at $3.77. Tier-two would increase by 16 cents or 3.4% on that specific tier. And tier-three, and it's specifically due to that desal being reallocated across all customer bases, would actually go down 68 cents. So we went over... Sorry. Probably going to jump ahead two slides again. Okay, so some sample bills. First, some geeky stats. It's coming, I promise. 29% of our customers stay within tier one, and this is, again, the single-family residence of 5/8-inch meter. So the tier-one is someone that uses zero to six units. And 59% of our customers stay within tier-two. So that means a total of 88% of our customers stay within the tier-two limit, which then, by default, means that 12% of our customers go into tier-three, which is 22 units or more per month.
Thank you. So, given that slide and given the previous slide, 29% of the customers are not seeing a commodity increase?
Correct, and I'll show that on the next three slides, I believe. So I wanted to give a rate example of a customer who stays within tier-one, a customer that goes into tier-two, and a customer that goes into tier-three. And that's what the next slide will do. So for this particular one, and to your point, Director Boyd Hodgson, a customer who uses four units of water that stays within tier-one, they would see their monthly bill increase to 52 cents. And that is that fixed portion of the bill that's going up 52 cents. So they've seen an increase of about 1%. For someone, this, now, we use, again, and you'll hear me say this often, single-family residents using 13 units of water with a 3/4, 5/8-inch meter. So that's our standard. And we use 13 because that's pretty much an industry standard. When you see other agencies do comparisons, they usually use 12, 13, 11, 12, or 13. We've always used 13. I want to be consistent with what we do. So each year, we'll be using 13. And back two years ago, that was the average that is being, is used within the district. We did an analysis and pulled all, you always hear me at 270,000 lines of data. We pulled all that, and the average was 13. Now it has dropped a little bit. It's about 12, just for reference. So the average single-family residence, 5/8-inch meter, using 13 units of water, they would see their bill increase about $1.64 or 1.8%.
Just to clarify, that's a total, for the, for the average single-family home customer within our, within our district, it's a total estimated $1.64 a month increase. Not $1.64 per unit or per, it's a total $1.64.
Correct.
So if their bill was $100 last month, next month, it would be $101.64?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And to add on to that, I want to make sure too, we are not proposing any sewer rate increases, but the sewer portion of an average single-family residence is about, is $38.99, I believe. If you were to add that we're not increasing the sewer rates, which have increased for four, five years, the actual increase for the total bill, combined bill, would be about 1.25%. So just to put it in perspective.
If it's too early to ask this question, and you want, you want to talk about it later, just let me know. But, you know, we're living in a time with unprecedented inflation. We're coming out of a pandemic. I think we've all gone to the gas station recently and seen the changes there. Certainly, the grocery store is horribly painful right now. Gas and electric, SDG&E going through the roof. How, how, how are you doing this? How are you keeping, you know, we haven't had a rate increase in two and a half years. That's two and a half years that have gone by of everything I just mentioned. And I know that we put a lot of reforms in place and some fiscal stuff to help be fiscally responsible, but $1.64 sounds like, you know, a really low increase given what's going on in the rest of the country and the world.
Yeah, there's a, there's a numerous, and General Manager Perlmont or anyone else can chime in. But for me, there's a lot of prudent fiscal planning that we've done. And some of the things that we've done two, three, four years ago, we're starting to reap now. Paying down the PERS UAL, which is our highest expensive debt, fully funding our OPEB, which is our retirement account, putting in solar, things like that. Those are things that are going to reap benefits year after year after year. So a lot of those prudent financial things that we've put into place.
It's quite an accomplishment, and I haven't decided yet how I'm going to vote tonight on this rate increase. But I am quite impressed because those, those costs, like gasoline and labor and vehicles, all that inflation that has gone into our economy is burdened by the water district, just like everybody else. And so our costs have certainly gone up as well. And so just, it's, it's quite remarkable that you've been able to keep it at $1.64.
Right. So our, I don't think I went over this one yet. The single-family resident using 30 units of water, because they do fall into tier-three, and tier-three is coming down a little bit, they would see a price decrease of $3.20 or 1.5%. But I kind of want to put it in perspective that less than 1% of our customers use 30 units of water or more per month. So what I also want to do, I did analyze some bills for other, besides single-family residents, just to kind of give an overall flavor of this. So we did use multifamily mobile estates and an irrigation-only customer. And I want to kind of go over those real quick, too. So in this example, I pulled a, an actual customer. It's a four-inch meter that has several hundred sub-meters behind it. Now remember, the district is only responsible for the main meter. We have no control over anything that's past that meter. So whatever the HOA or the management company or whatever imposes on to the end customer, we have no control over that. But I will give an example of what that would be. So in this particular example, that that customer used 2,100 units of water a month, their bill would go up $352 for the month, or about 2%. So if you divide that $352 into how many mobile estates are behind that meter, it would be about $1.7 per month per estate, just to kind of give you a little bit of reference.
And maybe, you might have said this, and I might, I might have not heard, heard you correctly, but how many mobile home estates would this, is this example using?
I'd rather not say only because it might attribute it to a specific mobile home. I mean, someone can do the math and figure it out.
300?
It's over 300.
Okay, so I just want to, from, you know, clarity and transparency, you see this number, $352 difference, that's a big difference, but you're talking 300.
The math is going to be easier to say.
Spread over 300.
It's 330.
Okay, thank you.
But...
But it comes out to $1.7.
$1.7 per month.
Per month?
Yes.
Per mobile home unit?
Per mobile home. And again, we don't have any control if the HOA wants to put a $10 increase or anything like that. But this is just kind of giving it perspective of what the average would be.
No, thank you.
And then the next one, coming up soon, would be the irrigation meter. So this is an irrigation two-inch meter, and this particular customer would use 215 units per month. Their increase would be about $24 or 2.1%. And the reason why I picked all these is that you can see, no matter what kind of example we show, and I'll go into this a little bit in a slide or two, is that the average increase is about 2% across the board. And I have more notes on that, too, to further hit that point. So again, more geeky stats stuff I love. So 28% of our customers would only see an increase of 52 cents a month. That's six bucks a year. About 64% of our customers would see an increase of 68 cents to $2.92 a month? Oh, sorry. I'm going to dance it all the way. And then 8%...
Here's a geeky question for you. We have never had this problem before, but is there something going on, or?
We're not sure. I was communicating with Jonathan during the meeting, and it's, we're not quite sure.
And maybe my, my presentation's so big, because I embedded some things in here with all the Excel stuff, and I have an Excel spreadsheet open, so.
No worries.
My 270,000 lines of data.
Just curious, yeah.
I'm straining the system.
You're overrunning technology.
Oh, yeah, and the other screens. About 8% of our customers would see a bill decrease, and those are the ones that are in tier-three. But again, less than 1% would see a decrease of $3.20 or more per month. So drought rates, I want to make sure to go over this slow, because I don't know if I did it justice last time. So bear with me. I'll slow down a little bit. Again, I see these numbers all the time, so it makes perfect sense to me. But when I went over it with my wife yesterday, she goes, "Mike, you got to slow down." So, in November of 2021, the board approved Ordinance 219, which implemented the district's water shortage contingency plan. In anticipation of the state enact state mandatory water usage cuts, the district analyzed how certain levels of cutback would impact the budget. So to walk you through the calculation of this particular one, the mandatory 10% cut back, the district would be hit with a net budget impact, and I'll explain that in a second, of one, about $1.5 million. So what that is, if we're selling 10% less water, we're probably buying 10% less water. The amount of money that we're saving by purchasing less water is more than offset by the revenue we lose. So we're losing more revenue than we're saving in the purchased water. Okay, so I want to make sure that's clear, because I know I go over that too fast. So in this particular case, it means that's that net budget impact. If we're saving, and I'll make up a number, if we're saving $1 million in expenses, we're actually losing 2.5, almost a million dollars in revenue. So that's, in this particular case, it'd be 1.4 million in revenue, net revenue loss that we're having. The district normally sells about 6.1, 6.2 million units of water per year. So if we had a 10% cutback, our new demand, amount of water we'd sell, is about 5.6 million units of water. Okay, so I want to make sure those two numbers are clear, because now, the math is simple. It's just A divided by B. To recover that $1.4 million, which is basically our fixed costs that we, that we have to cover, you would take that $1.4 million, divide it by that 5.5 million, which is our remaining units, to come up with a per-unit rate. Okay, which is 26 cents. So basically, if the demand was cut back 10%, we'd have to charge an extra 26 cents per unit to be made whole.
Oh, go ahead.
So I have a question, and maybe this is obvious to other folks, but... So why doesn't the San Diego Water Authority also charge drought rates for the amount of water that we purchase if we are going to be charging, or so, not drought, I said that in not an accurate way. Why doesn't the San Diego Water Authority accommodate drought conditions with the rate that they charge us? Because that's 70% of our costs. When, when we're in a situation like we're in, why, why don't they provide some accommodations so that we don't have to ask our customers to pay more for less?
So I'll generalize, and maybe someone else can chime in with a better answer. But the Water Authority would have the same issue. If they're selling 10% less water, they have higher, you know, they're a bigger agency than us.
Yeah, and they have a wholesaler above them.
Right.
With same, same relationship.
So it's kind of that trickle-down, trickle-down effect on that, too, that they're being hit with the same thing. And they set their rates every year. They don't have to go through a Prop 218 to set rates for us. So what would happen is there was a huge cutback, and I'm theorizing here, that they would increase our rates pretty severely.
Just, just for my own education, does the water, does San Diego County Water Authority have a, you know, like a surplus or any kind of reserves that are built up for a rainy day fund like we do that they could use, to Director Boyd Hodgson's point, I think it's a very good one, that they could use to kind of limit that pain in these, these times?
Yes, and they have been, they, I don't know numbers, but they do have a reserve fund as well. And they've been using it the last several years to kind of mitigate the price increases that they've sent on to us. Now, as you know, reserve fund is a, is a basically a one-time pot of money, right? Now, as you know, reserve fund is basically a one-time pot of money, right? So if you keep using that, it's going to dwindle down. So it's not a good practice to use your reserve fund for ongoing cost savings. But if it's a rainy day type fund and the drought only lasts a year, we could probably weather it. The Water Authority could probably weather it. I don't want to make predictions on their budget. I haven't looked at their budget in detail. But yes, they have been using some of their reserve fund, and they possibly would use that again.
Yeah, the Water Authority has a special fund called the Rate Stabilization Fund that they draw and from time to time when they see unexpected increases in costs, and they don't want to pass those along directly to all their member agencies, so they draw from that. But like Mike mentioned, those are one-time draws. And they'll either have to replenish it over time, which would cause rates to go back up, or hopefully learn to balance where they don't have to draw on the rate stabilization fund. But over the last three, four years, they've reduced their rate stabilization fund quite a bit. And President Elathar is our representative down there if he wants to add anything to that.
No, that's basically it. I think their reserves are about 600 million, I think, at this point.
Okay, so as long as everyone understands the math on this, the math works exactly the same for the other.
Mike, I had a question.
Yes.
On cutbacks in sales and the effects on revenue. If fixed costs were totally covered by fixed revenues, there wouldn't, it wouldn't make a difference.
If there was 100% match on that, possibly. But there's also accounting, different terminology of what's truly a fixed cost, what's truly a fixed revenue. So it's kind of hard to mesh those, but in theory, you are correct.
So it wouldn't matter how much sales varied, you'd still completely cover.
I'm trying to think if there'd be any exceptions to that. I can't think of anything offhand because some, for example, some costs are fixed and variable, right? We have the pumps, right? We have to run the pumps no matter what. Even if we don't sell any water, you're still going to want to have to recirculate those pumps. It's still going to cost money. If you sell less water, you might not have to use the pumps as much, but part of it is fixed, part of it's variable. So you get into that hybrid thing that's probably higher than my level to kind of comprehend.
Mike, wouldn't you also say that there's a significant amount of, for example, personnel costs we're recovering through commodity rates? Those are truly fixed costs because the department's, or the district's not going to lay off 30% of its staff to go along with a drought declaration. So those are fixed, and those are being recovered through commodity.
Yeah, I think districts strive to make that coverage as high as practical.
Right.
But I've seen as high as 80% of fixed costs covered by fixed revenues.
Right, and the one issue with that, and it'd be a management and board decision, is the higher your fixed costs, right, the person that uses four units of water, their bill's going to go up. So there's a balancing act to that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so, oh, so what I wanted to do is give an example of a 30% cutback. So if there was a mandated 30% cutback, as you can see on the slide, the additional charge for the drought rate would be 78 cents. So I want to run through real quick a scenario on that. So again, the average single-family resident's 13 units of water, their bill is $94.06. If there was a cutback of, if there was a mandated cutback of 30%, so if they'd used 30% less water, which means they're using 70% of the 13 units, so 70% down here, 70% of 13 units is 9.1 units. So they'd now be using 9.1 units. Now, I want to let you know, I'm using this for illustrative purposes only. Our billing system bills in full units. So this is just to show the math. So if that customer were to cut back and only use 9.1 units, their actual commodity charge, because they're using less water, would go from $94 to $74. But they would be assessed the drought charge of, I think it's, if I go one more. They would be assessed a drought charge of $7.10. And that's just simply the 9.1 units. And if you remember, the 30% rate was 78 cents. So their total bill now would be $82. So if they did comply and they did do their cutback of 30%, they would actually be saving money. They wouldn't be saving the 30%, but they would save about $12 a month or 12.8%. Now, if a customer weren't to comply, if they still use their 13 units, of course, obviously, their bill is going to go up. So they're using the same amount of water, the 13 units right here. So their water charge would still be the $94. And in this case, they'd be charged the 13 units times 78 cents. So that's $10.14. So their bill would be $104. So that's an increase of about $10 or 10.8%. I know a lot of numbers, a lot of math. I hope I went slow enough to explain it properly.
Yeah, I think the important takeaway on that slide is that customers will have the ability to moderate their billing, right? If they save in the proportions that we think that they should be saving, they will actually see a reduction in their monthly bill.
So a question on the drought, drought charge.
Is that enacted by state or by us? Who forces that drought charge?
So the board would have to, our board would have to make a declaration that we go to a certain drought level, which would set up the ability to charge these drought rates. So our board did that previously with our drought ordinance. We just didn't have the drought rates in place. So this will connect the two pieces together. So, but we certainly look to the state, we look to the Water Authority for water supply conditions to determine when we should go to a different drought level. But the action is actually taken at this board's level.
So in anticipation of these rates now being implemented, do we have a gap in time before we roll out the new water rates and then we implement the drought rates? So that there is, so that perhaps there's not confusion around, you know, if a customer gets a bill, and let's say they are sort of along this end of the spectrum where they were not able to cut back, and they see, you know, that we raised their rates, you know, X percent that we're talking about tonight, but then also there's a drought charge. So they're, they get two increases, and maybe they're only expecting one. Do we have a gap in implementation of both of these sets of rates?
There could certainly be whatever delay our board wanted to see. How I would see this happen, if there was no majority protest tonight and the board adopted these rates, they would become effective October 1st. But we would have no drought rates in place on that initial October 1st deadline. Let's say we fast forward several months after that, and the water supply conditions get worse, and we think we have to declare some kind of a drought level. Let's say we want to go to a drought level three to stay consistent with Mike's example. I would come forward to the board, recommend that the board adopt that drought level, and then ask the board, when do you want the rates to become effective? It doesn't need to become effective immediately, but making the declaration allows you to implement those drought rates. But the timing would be at the discretion of the board.
And if I could add, the drought rates are the maximum amount. If it's, the drought rate three is 78 cents, we would do, definitely do a fiscal analysis. I bring it to the Finance Committee and show you all the numbers. And we could say, hey, we only really need 50 cents. Or the drought rate, the drought three was June 1st, but we can wait until September 1st. So there's definitely that authority. It is not an automatic, the board would have to approve all of it, and it sets the maximum. So it's not implementing the actual charge on the customer's bill. It's just authorizing the framework for the drought rates.
Yeah, and none of this, no changes would be made without the board's approval.
Absolutely.
That answered my question, too. Thank you.
Okay, so we do rate surveys of our neighboring agencies. And the most recent survey done was in May of 2022. So we've seen this plenty of times. So currently, our, the district's rates are at $92.42. Again, average single-family residence, 13 units, five eighths, three-quarter inch meter. With the proposed increases that we've discussed today, the rates would go to 94.06, which is this darker blue bar here, which would put Valacitos still in the bottom third of all the agencies surveyed. The average in San Diego County of these 20-some-odd agencies is $109.31. So that $109 is about 16% above even our proposed rates. So I wanted to kind of show a little graphic to kind of show what's happened in history. So we did a rate survey five years ago. So I have that data from five years ago that I wanted to share with you. And it really highlights the exceptional job, in my opinion, that the district has done to combat some of these rate increases. So back in 2017, the average of these same agencies that are up, let me go back real quick. The average of these same agencies was $89.25. Today, as I mentioned, that averages $109.31 for an increase of $20 over that five-year period. That equates to about 22.5%. And if you annualize that on a per-year basis, that's 4.14%. Now, General Manager Prom mentioned the rate of inflation and CPI, and I think one of the board members mentioned that as well. So inflation over that same five-year period. Now, this is CPI, Consumer Price Index. This is for the urban San Diego. So I want to be specific because there's so many CPIs, there's so many indexes, you hear so many numbers. So this is specific to the San Diego region of all urban users. So the rate of inflation for that same five-year period was 20.72%. So annualized, it's 3.84%. So then you ask, so where does the Valacitos fall in? So during that same time period, Valacitos in 2017, your average bill was $85.54. With the proposal that I presented today, it's $94.06, an increase of $8.52 over five years. That's less than 10%, annualized at 1.92%. One-half of the rate of inflation over that same time period. And I believe Mr. Prom mentioned that the inflation's 8%, 9% right now. So this 3.84 is actually kind of quite low when you look at what's happening currently. But I wanted to use that five-year period just to kind of give a sense of what's been happening in not only the water industry, but to show that even the CPI, which reflects, you know, a bigger than just the water agencies or utilities. So I think that's quite remarkable, also considering, as we've mentioned plenty of times, that 25% of our portfolio is the desal water. So we had a list of questions at the beginning that General Manager Prom went over. So I want to go ahead and address all those right now. So I'll go over them one by one, and I'm sorry for the delay again. So the question was, how much are rates going up for the average single-family residence? I've heard different things out there. So let me be clear. The average single-family resident will see a dollar sixty-four increase per month, 1.8%. So what is the maximum increase for residential meters? I always use the average, okay? Well, the average is the average. But someone in the previous study, it was told that the average was 4%. But unfortunately, those people that use a lot of tier water, their bill went up about 15%. And that wasn't clearly, that wasn't transparent when it was presented to the board. So I want to be extremely transparent when I talk about these rates. So the maximum increase that any user, residential user would see is 2.62%. How did I get to that? If you remember, the tier one rates are going to remain the same. So anyone that uses just tier one water is only going to see that 52 cent increase. So it was about 1% for that person that used the fourth. The biggest increase is going to be that person that uses the most tier two water. Because tier two is the only tier that's going up, if you remember, tier three is going down. So, and I know I'm getting too geeky in this, but I really want to be transparent. I really need to explain this, so forgive me. So tier two for a five-inch meter is 21 units. So for a person using 21 units of water in tier two, and I did all the meter sizes here. So for a three-quarter, five-inch meter, which is the majority of our single-family residents, the maximum increase for someone using the maximum amount of tier two water would be 2.25%. And that one-inch meter would be that 2.62, and all other meters are about 2.5%. So I just kind of wanted to show you, everything's falling within that 2%, 2.5%. Some are going down. Question, are any developer-related projects funded through water rates? No. As addressed in several previous board meetings, over the past several years, developer projects are not included in rates. And John mentioned, too, that we are not, no growth projects are included or even looked at in rates. Question three, or question four, wherever I'm at. Why is BWD using the fiscal year 2122 budget? I think John alluded this to earlier. We actually started this process in November of 2020. The goal was to come to the board at the end of '21 to enact rates in January of 2022. What budget was active in January 2022? It was the fiscal year 2122 budget. So at the time, we had a draft proposal out there already that was on the 2122 budget. We have to be able to distinguish between calendar year and fiscal year. Fiscal year runs July through June, calendar year, obviously, January through December. When we propose rates for a calendar year, we're always going to be six months behind. So let's jump back a year. If I was coming to you last year to propose rates for January 2022, as I was mentioning, we'd be using the fiscal year 2122 budget. Okay, that is only six months of the 2022 calendar year. So we're always going to be six months behind. Does that benefit or hurt the consumer? Well, where do you think prices are going to go up in six months, up or down? So if we're using a frozen budget that's six months behind, it's only benefiting the rate payer. So, oh, here's my answer. And for the calendar year 2023 rates that will be coming forward to you in the future, we will be using the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. And the last question that I have on here. How much revenue is actually being collected to fund replacement and rehab capital projects? So we do have 7.64 million in replacement and rehab projects listed in the CIP, and only $925,000 is being funded from current rates. And I have a little graphic here I want to kind of show you to walk you through this. So I mentioned the water replacement project, non-growth, it's about 7.6 million dollars. We do have some revenue that offsets that cost, so that's taxes, investment earnings, and that's about 2.9 million dollars. So that comes off of that. And then we are drawing down our operating reserves for these capital projects of about 3.8 million dollars. And I'll show you that in the next slide. So that means the revenue requirement from rates is only $925,000 for this budget year. So this is a slide that I stole from Wes when he did his budget presentation. So this shows that in, that the June 2021 and that the June 2021 fiscal year, our maximum water, our maximum reserve was set at $43 million, and we were right there at the maximum, $43 million. Our proposal for that year was to draw down $5.4 million in reserves. So our reserves are going to go, try to use the mouse, from the 43 million down to the 38. And then in the next, I told you, we don't look at things in a silo. We don't look at just one year. We kind of look at a five-year and even a 10-year horizon. That's the prudent way to do any type of fiscal analysis. So with all this prudent fiscal planning, we do have a plan to draw down our reserves and then kind of have them level out, my mouse isn't working, at about 36, 38 million dollars. And you can see in 2026, we're probably right in between at about the 50% level between our floor and our ceiling. So I think that is the end of my presentation, and I would welcome any board questions or any further comments from Mr. Prom if he wants to add anything.
Yeah, maybe I'll just add a few things before I turn it back over to you, President Elathar. So just to maybe summarize a few of the essential points. First of all, the rate increase is 1.77% for the typical single-family household. You may hear people saying it's 17 or 19%. It's not, it's 1.77%. No rate payer money is being used to subsidize development or developers. And we are utilizing our reserves prudently to minimize and smooth any future rate increases. So as you saw in that last slide, we take that longer-term look. We don't want rates to bounce up and down. We like to make it nice and smooth. So we talked about a multi-year rate increase, right? So the board, if there's no majority protest and the board approves those rates today, you're only approving the rates that will become effective on October 1st. Any future adjustments allowed by this multi-year process will require additional board action. So don't think you're approving rates out for five years. You're not. You're doing a one-year rate increase, but it gives you the ability to have four more rate increases, but it requires board approval. And those will, they're proposed to occur on January 1st of the four subsequent years, but that's at the board's discretion, too. You can choose to adopt something lower than what's proposed in the Prop 218 notice, and you can defer to a later date, the implementation of those, at the board's discretion. So in the four subsequent years, we'll come back and we'll give you updates on the financials and let you know, do we need to have a rate increase, at what amount, and when do we envision it being proposed? But the board has the ultimate decision on that.
Can you, I'm sorry.
I know you explained it, I'm still trying to, we're adopting a five-year rate, like the framework? Is that why we're doing that?
You're adopting a framework, that's the best way to put it.
Okay.
Within that framework, it does specifically set rates for October 1st, and then it establishes maximum allowables and a methodology for future rate increases through the next subsequent four calendar years.
And is that standard in the industry? Why don't we just do it yearly? Is it because of the 218?
Yeah, it's becoming more industry standard. There's a lot of work involved and prepared. There's a lot of work involved in preparing a cost-of-service study. As you see, the time element of what data do you use, and it takes time to get it done, and by the time you start the process, then you adopt a new budget. So we took this longer look, but it's tied to certain things that are, for example, like pass-through rates. We're not determining the water rates from the county water authority. They determine, the water authority determines those, so we're just going to pass through whatever they decide on. But we have some internal cost increases for Vallesitos, some specific costs, but we cap those. There's a certain percentage cap on those as well. So even if inflation continued at, say, 10%, we could only increase our rates by, is it six?
It's about four. Internally, it's four.
Internally, it's four, right.
And on the water authority, just to reiterate, it's six and a half.
Right. So there's protections for the rate payers out there that even if inflation goes crazy, this Prop 218 process limits the board's ability to increase water rates.
Okay. So we're considering a five-year framework with a one-year rate increase?
Correct. Yeah, so October 1st of this year would be set, and then January 1st of 2023, '24, '25, and '26 are allowable under this Prop 218 process. If things went haywire and inflation went crazy and our reserves couldn't absorb the hit that the limitations place on them, we would come back with another Prop 218 process. So, but that wouldn't happen for another couple of years. We'd try to weather the storm, right? Inflation doesn't usually stay at a really high level for extended periods of time. But if it did and our reserves couldn't accommodate it, then we'd come back for another process. I don't envision that happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Sennell, and then Director Boyd-Hunt.
Yeah, since we have, we're fortunate to have our consultant here, who, I'm assuming you work with a number of water agencies, and you've seen a number of rate frameworks. I fully trust and have full confidence in our staff, but you're not part of Vallesitos, and so could you tell us, from your perspective and your expertise, is this framework industry standard? Any concerns or flaws in it?
Let me answer it in a few ways. I think that one of the things that my firm, and I think reputable rate consultants do, is we really are bound by professional ethics to make sure that the advice we're giving our clients regarding how we allocate costs and develop rates for different types of customers is truly fair and equitable. We're also bound to do that by the Proposition 218 framework, and there is a certain stat, set of industry-standard principles for allocating costs and developing rates that align with Prop 218. I feel very comfortable telling you that's been the case in this rate study. As it relates to the Proposition 218 notice, and in this case, in effect, a five-year framework, the current rates are being proposed for October 1st and then the next four years, it's very, very common for agencies to issue a Prop 218 notice for four to five years. And keep in mind, as pointed out by the general manager, the proposed rates in the future years are maximums. They are, in effect, not to exceed maximums. And as the board considers every year adjusting rates, you are fully free, as indicated previously, to not do it, to push it off, or to adopt rate increases that are lower than what was noticed in Prop 218. And I think that the five-year or four-year noticing period is helpful both to the agency in question and the customers. What it does for the agency is it provides some sort of financial management certitude as you're doing internal financial planning. You've got a four- or five-year Prop 218 notice out there, and you know what to build your revenue projections around, at least on the rate revenue side, as a max. It also sends a signal to water users, especially probably non-residential water users, for whom water may be a big cost of production for them, about what they need to budget for over a three- or four- or five-year period ahead of time. So it's very common. So I feel quite comfortable with what has been presented to you tonight. And keep in mind that one of the things that the district staff has been very careful about doing is making it clear that the district has very little control over what San Diego County Water Authority can do. And so when you think about the proposed rates that are shown in the Prop 218 notice, I think that the district is fully transparent that the rates that are shown may vary depending upon what the actions the county water authority takes in their water supply costs. And I think that's very common as well. You can't give 100% certitude on what your wholesale water supplier, or for that matter, what San Diego Gas and Electric is going to do on the utility side.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Director Boyd-Hunt.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. You know, we've talked about the revenue requirement, and looking at the math, you know, it checks out that the water purchases are 70% and the operating expenses are about 27%. How does that compare with other special districts in our area as far as those proportions?
You're asking me that question?
Well, not necessarily. I'm just, I'm asking.
I mean, I'll give it, I'll give that a shot for you. I think that local water utilities that purchase wholesale supplies through, in effect, the Metropolitan Water District system, which is a system that serves about 23 million people, and San Diego County Water Authority gets the majority of its water supplies from MADD, are all in a position where you might see their cost structure is at least 50% purchased water. I guess we could find some that were less, but purchased water costs are a very, very high percentage of the overall revenue requirement. And when Mike showed you that survey of county water agencies and how this district's rates compare to others, I think for most of those agencies, a huge amount of their overall revenue requirement is purchased water.
Thank you. That's what I suspected. I think that that might be an interesting thing to look at. You know, I appreciate what you've done here with the rate survey, but having an understanding of how we are tracking relative to other agencies about the proportion that we are spending where, I think is a good, might be a good idea. I'm sort of geeky and curious about that, so maybe we can have something like that at some point, not tonight, but at some point.
And just to add on to that, there's some agencies that have local groundwater, so it would kind of, you know, not really comparable. I mean, we could get the number, and we can give it to you, but you got to kind of understand that what's behind those numbers. The one thing I did want to point out about this slide that I forgot to mention, and I mentioned it before, is the NWD refund that we got recently. A lot of agencies are using it to hold down their rates, but it's only a one-time, one-year rate buy-down, if you say. So had agencies done what we did and refunded the money back to the customer, this average of $109 would probably be about $2 higher, and each agency that retained the money to offset rates would probably be about $2 higher as well. So just to kind of put that in perspective, that even more highlights where we are on this slide.
I have another question. Why would we build into the cost-of-service study not fully funding the CIP? And I understood the slide. I understood, you know, where the money is coming from, but, you know, we have just recently drawn on our reserves. Why would we build into the cost-of-service study $3.8 million further reduction in the reserves?
So part of it, and I'll let other people answer it too, if they have a better answer. But part of it is also, I told you, we look at smoothing rates and looking at not just one year. My example, and I'd like to use extreme examples to kind of get the point across. If we had $10 million in projects this year and zero next year, you don't want to build a rate on $10 million and then come back down to zero and then $4 million the next year. So we do look at a five-year horizon, even actually after 10 years, to kind of smooth those rates. And we felt with that one slide that, and I can't unfortunately get to the specific slide because of how slow it is, but the slide that showed our fund balance and where we stand at the $36 and $38 million in the next four years. So we do all that analysis to see where we'll be, not just this year, but four or five years down the line.
Yeah, and to add to that, we would normally have our reserve levels right at the ceiling, but we saw these huge future costs coming several years ago, so we tried to build up that reserve to do exactly what Mike said, to try to smooth things. So we knew we were building this kind of bankroll, knowing that there'd be a large CIP component, knowing that we wanted to address our PERS obligation and our OPEB obligations and some heavy costs, and we knew we'd start to draw down off of that, the ceiling of the reserve levels that we had there. And I'll invite Wes if he has any other thoughts.
No, it's actually very well said. James actually just did mention to me, though, we're doing the asset management plan, and one thing we will be looking at in the future is the cost of replacement projects, and there are significant costs that are kind of forecasted, but that'll be for future budget years. And you'll see when we do those future budgets, we always do the five-year picture, looking at the five-year window, so we just try to smooth those costs to our customers.
And Mr. Scaglione, when he was speaking earlier, he mentioned that we have more money than any other agency. I don't know if that's true or not, but I don't know of a single agency or industry professional that thinks that people have too much money in their replacement funds. Infrastructure has always been underfunded in the utility sector, so we want to make sure that we have adequate money set aside to replace and repair our aging infrastructure. We're fortunate that we're a younger agency, but a lot of our pipes are reaching the end of their useful life, and unless we want to go out and start incurring high debt, you know, high interest rate debt, it'll, we'll be glad that we have these higher reserve levels to help cash fund some of those projects.
All right. Any other questions?
One other question. You mentioned discretionary revenues. What are our, where are those coming from?
Sure, we have, and I don't know the exact amounts, but I know in total, there's property tax revenues, RDA revenues, and then like interest income, and I think they're about $2.78 million?
Yeah, it's around 2.5.
Somewhere in the mid-twos.
And those can be allocated for other uses besides our water purchases, you're saying?
They're discretionary, so we could use them at the, pretty much at the board's leisure, within certain guidelines, but yes.
And annually, it's about $2.5 million, you said?
I believe so, yes.
For the water fund, yeah.
Water fund, yes.
Hmm. Thank you.
So I apologize, you just took the slide presentation down, but I was going to ask you, do you have a slide showing the five-year framework and the percentage increases year over year? Because I, you know, we're voting tonight on a five-year framework with sort of anticipated percentage increases, and my understanding is that they could be up to, what, 6.5%?
For the purchased water from the water authority, it'd be 6.5%, and for our internal costs, we're, it's a cap of about 4%.
Okay. You don't have a slide for that?
For the future or for the past?
For the future. What we're voting on tonight?
No, I do not have a slide for that because we're not voting on rates for the next couple of years. So just to give you a perspective, if 70%, okay, I'll do the quick math, if 70% of our purchases are water costs, you take 70% of 6.5, that's 4.2, 4.5% about, and if 30% is that 4%, that's 1.2. What number did I say first? 4.5? Plus 1.2, that's 5.7% would be the maximum increase that we could pass through on any particular year.
Okay.
And in our five-year budget, it's worth mentioning also that we don't anticipate reaching the maximum at any time during the five-year period.
Okay, thank you. I'm just, I appreciate that. And I appreciate that math that you did in your head as well, Mike, thank you.
That's easy, cool.
I know, that was really impressive. So I, so here's, here's what I think, for the benefit of myself and the public, I'd like an explanation of what the benefit is of voting on this framework as opposed to just voting on the single number. Sorry, I know we're not voting on numbers over the five-year framework, but what is the benefit of voting on a five-year framework tonight versus only voting on a Prop 218 that covers one year?
One, we'd have to do a Prop 218 notice every single year, and as I mentioned, I think on August 3rd, the cost for this one is probably well over $100,000 so far. So if we did that every year, we're hitting our rate payers basically for $100,000 plus on that. Two, it, as General Manager Perlmont, or I believe John mentioned, it kind of provides kind of like a certainty for our HOAs. I get calls from our HOAs every year in about this time because they're doing their budgets for January. Mike, what do you think the rate increase is going to be? This way, I could give them some certainty. Well, the water authority passed on X, I could tell you budget, and I always tell them a little bit higher. I say budget 5.5. So it'll probably come in at around 5, 4.5, but I would budget 5.5. So it provides a little bit of certainty. It saves a lot of costs. And again, we still need to come back to the board. The board would still need to approve it every year. It's not a rubber stamp that it goes through. We'd still do all the same, a lot of the same analysis. I'd still look at my 270,000 lines of data. I'd run it through the finance committee. You'd hear it until you're sick of hearing from me with all the geeky numbers again.
Yeah, the only real difference in there is we wouldn't have to follow all the rigor of the Prop 218 process with a 45-day noticing period in that. But everything else would be the same. We would come forward probably in the maybe November timeframe and tell the board, hey, for January 1, here's the rate increase we think is prudent based on budget numbers and forecasted costs. And then the board would have full authority within the limits of the noticing to set rates or not set rates. And as John mentioned, the board can choose to not increase rates in the future. They can choose to increase them, but at an amount not to exceed what was listed in the Prop 218 notice, or they could choose to defer the implementation date. They can't accelerate the implementation date, nor can they go above the limitation set, but they can go lower and delay. So any future rate increase will be at the board's sole discretion. Staff would never have the authority to make these rate changes.
So if the board decided to come back next year, for example, if we adopt the, you know, the framework of the five years, and the board decided to come back next year and say, you know what, we would like to reexamine that, does that trigger automatically a Prop 218 sequence where we would be spending $100,000 to do another study?
No, it wouldn't. If the board chose, if the financial circumstances were such that the board didn't think they needed to increase rates in the next year, then you can defer it to the next year because the Prop 218 process would allow us to, it still would cover that five-year period.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions.
I had like maybe two more things if I could add.
Oh, I'm sorry.
President Alatharp, I'm sorry. So as our attorney mentioned, protest to the proposed rate increases do, must be in a written form, okay? And to help our customers that may wish to submit a written protest, we do have forms in the back of the room, so if you haven't previously submitted a written form, there are forms in the back of the room to make it easier. If you want to complete it, you could hand them to Ann or Anthony so that we can tabulate them at the end. And there's also an information sheet at the back of the room that's talking about our upcoming Water Academy. It's on October 20th. It's a great way to learn more about the district and how we do our operations. And with that, with that shameless promotion, I'll turn it back over to you, President Alatharp.
Along that, have we received any thus far, as far as written?
Yeah, we'll get to that a little later.
We'll summarize that later.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no other questions related to the presentation, I'd like to thank staff as well as our consultant. And Mike, your geekiness is getting legendary, so I applaud you for that.
Give and take.
I've already told them no twice.
So with that, we will now open the public hearing, and we will hear from anyone who wishes to speak. So I'll call the first and only speaker I have so far to the podium. I have a request to speak from Mr. Tom Scaglione.
Director Alatharp and board members, we are currently paying $6.9 million. It's 14.5% of our water bill for a, quote, "transfer to capital reserve," end quote. At the time, the last rate increase, at the time of the last rate increase, the entire five-year capital CIP program was $16 million, and you had already accumulated $32 million of ratepayer money set aside specifically for the purpose to fund this capital improvement program. So there was a question that the board had, it wasn't quite answered. It's like, you know, why aren't we including the whole thing in your revenue requirement? You already collected it. You already have way more than your entire five-year capital improvement program. So that, and this, that 6.9 million that we continue to pay, that's like paying off your car loan, and your bank says, no, keep paying it, keep paying it. No, we already paid for the CIP way more over. So, and that's 14.5% of our bill. So that is not a cost to provide water. Did you ever step back and say to yourself, why do we keep on increasing and accumulating ratepayer money more than any other independent special retail water district? And the month before these rates that we currently have went into effect, the developer fund deficit was $11.8 million. After the first full year of customers paying $6.9 million in excess of the water, the cost to provide water, the deficit plummeted to $18.5 million. That's 6.7 million that developers did not pay for their impacts, we paid for them out of our rates. Ratepayer reserves increased $2.5 million during that same time period while developer plummeted. So the proposed increase includes $7.6 million for rate-funded CIP. We are We are still funded in excess of the five-year CIP. The 7.6 million is not a cost of service. So please, what I'm asking you to consider today, to one, delay any actions on the water rates, to allow time to enter the current fiscal year, 2022, 2023 budget into the rates. Technically, you don't have a basis for your rates, because it was the prior year, it's already done. And it may be more, maybe less, but at least it's accurate. And John did a great job on your, on your rate model, so it's very easy to do that. Two, eliminate the revenue requirement for any CIP expenditures or transfers to CIP reserves, of which neither is a cost of service since your reserves are currently funded by ratepayers in excess of your entire CIP program. If I may take just a couple more minutes to wrap up?
Just finish up quickly, please.
Yeah, I will, thank you. Eliminating the, or I'll skip that one. Reduce the revenue requirement by the water CIP replacement reserve, 40.3 million currently, in excess of the, of your current CIP program, which is 31.4 million. So you've over-collected 8.9 million. Reduce that revenue requirement. Eliminate the consolidated change in reserve, that just serves to restore your reserves to where they are now, 108 million. Not every other agency is incompetent. There's a reason why they don't have 108 million.
Tom, please wrap it up.
Okay, let's, thank you. Just a question, I think it was asked, right, how many letters were received, and was there any consideration for D-SAL in the drought cutbacks?
We're not, I've already indicated we're not answering questions during the public hearing.
Okay, for later, thank you.
Okay, I have no other requests to speak. Seeing no others who wish to speak, I'm prepared to close the public hearing. Before I do that, I would like to provide anyone who would like to submit or withdraw a written protest the opportunity to do so. Once the public hearing is closed, the District Board of Directors may no longer accept any written protests on the proposed rate increases. Are there any remaining written protests to be delivered to the Secretary of the Board? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. At this time, I would like to ask the Secretary of the Board whether a recess will be needed to tabulate the results.
I don't believe we'll need a recess, but I will ask Ann or Anthony to give me the total tabulation. So before the meeting started, we received, how many?
127.
Okay, and at the meeting, we received?
Zero.
Zero. Okay, so, all right, so we don't need time to tabulate.
Okay. Okay, are you going to summarize that tabulation?
Yeah, I could do that. All right, so kind of did that, but I'll just, for the formality, so prior to the close of the public hearing, which just occurred, we received a total of 127 written protest letters regarding the rates for the water service charges. For the proposed rates for the district's water service charges, a majority of the owners of the identified parcels or tenants directly liable for such charges, for example, the number required to constitute a majority protest would equal 10,091 votes. A majority protest does not exist to the proposed rates for the water service charges.
Thank you. Okay, the Secretary of the Board has advised us that based on the number of valid written protests submitted prior to the close of the public hearing, a majority protest does not exist for the adoption of the proposed rates for the water service charges. The District Board of Directors may now proceed to Action Item 2.1 to consider the proposed ordinance to adopt the increases to the district's water service charges. As a reminder, the time for public comment has ended, and the District Board of Directors will not engage directly with any individual customer or member of the public. Do any members of the District Board of Directors wish to speak or call on staff for any clarification with respect to the proposed rate increases? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to deliberating on Action Item 2.1. And I'll open it for discussion, and I will entertain a motion.
I have a little bit, I guess, just some discussion. You know, I don't think, and I know all of my colleagues here fairly well, having served with you, and I know that nobody likes to do rate increases, ever. And I know that we've put a high priority on being fiscally responsible and setting a high standard when it came to really getting the most out of every dollar that the ratepayers pay into Galocitos. I think that's reflected in staff's presentation tonight with the end results being what will, if this is passed tonight, what will equate to be about $1.64 per month for the average single-family home customer. I'm still a little bit blown away, I hadn't geeked out, I guess that's the word of the night. I haven't heard the word geek or geeky at a board meeting since ever, but it's been used a lot. So I, I, I just, I'm a little bit, you know, it's remarkable that you've, that we as a district, and especially our staff, has been able to accomplish that, especially given the fact that there has been zero rate increase for the last two and a half years. That in of alone, in of itself alone, is a great accomplishment. Given the circumstances that society is in today with inflation, and every night that we turn on the news, we hear about how people are, they're struggling, they're making tough decisions, not purchasing groceries because they need to put gasoline in their car to get to work, those types of life and death decisions, I'm glad that, at least from this Board's standpoint, that we've put the effort and the emphasis on being so fiscally responsible that if we do end up voting for this increase tonight, that that impact is as minimal as I think it possibly could be. $1.64 per month for the average single-family home resident or customer in our district is, is to be commended. And so I'm still, this is going to be a game time decision for me as we make the votes. I don't know exactly how I'm going to vote, because I'm trying to weigh this inflationary pressure that is on our community. And I don't know if this is the right time for a rate increase, but I am very proud of our staff and my fellow colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Snell. Any other discussion?
I'd like to commend staff for the presentation, and the detail in the thoroughness, and Raftalas, thank you for your work on this. My concern is that it's, it's a little, it requires a lot of nuance and attention to detail in the interworkings of the water district to understand that we are only approving a rate increase for one year versus the five-year framework. And as Chair of the Personnel Policy and Public Awareness Committee, I think that it will be very, very important that if this passes tonight, that our committee work with the PR department to really do a good job explaining that so that the general public doesn't, that, you know, may or may not remember getting this, may or may not have paid attention to the work that we have been doing, but looks at their bill and sees, you know, that we have this increase plus a drought increase plus, you know, a readout that we've increased, you know, that we're, that we're talking about rates over the next five years. They may think that that means that the rates are going to increase that much over the next five years. And if, I wish that we were just voting on, on the single, the single year and using the five-year framework as exactly that, a guide, a framework. And that's, that would be my preference for this. I think, I understand the term of the 218, the Prop 218, and the necessity of the study, but I feel that there, there's a lot, there's room for a lot of confusion amongst the public and a lot of, frankly, a lot of calls that we're all going to get if, you know, if this package is rolled out as, as a complete package.
Any other?
No, just echo the comments that were already mentioned. Great job, staff. Appreciate all the work and effort that's been gone, put forth on this. I actually like the package. I think it's, because it's somewhat visionary, and have we done it before? Have we approved a five-year framework?
No, I think the most we've ever done was a two-year.
Okay. But I like it, the cost-saving measures, we're looking forward, that we can't proceed with changing any rates except on, you know, through Board approval anyways, and I like a framework, framework's great. I like the healthy discussion that's been brought forth. There's been some public that brought forth some good questions and presented some numbers. I think that's healthy, because it keeps us on our toes, keeps us, you know, we're not just going to roll through and just approve stuff, and hey, are we drawing down reserves? Are we, you know, what are we doing with developers? I like that healthy discussion, so I thank you for bringing that forward, and it does, it keeps us on our toes, it keeps me, I mean, I'm not a geeky guy, and I don't like that. It's been, there's a lot of numbers that were brought forth. Conceptually and philosophically, I like how we are very conservative, we're looking to the future. We, like Director Snell said, we're not, nobody likes rate increases. But I, personally, I would prefer, you know, a 1%, 2% increase annually instead of, we're going to stay flat for a while and all of a sudden a big hit comes and it's going to affect somebody. So I think we are looking out for our ratepayers in the long term, and I like how we're doing that. So, and I appreciate, again, everything that's been brought forth, and we'll see how it goes.
Okay, well said, Director Pennick. Yeah, I think, I think we're kind of shirking our responsibility if we don't raise rates. We have an obligation to take care of our infrastructure and the many other costs that we have that we see increasing every year, so I think we'd be shirking our responsibility if we don't raise rates. So I'm willing to support staff's recommendation to adopt the ordinance, and I would, I would make that in the form of a motion, and I'll entertain a second to that.
I can second that.
Okay, it's been moved by myself, seconded by Director Pennick. There's no further discussion, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, on to other business. Look, all we have is Director's comments and future agenda items. Any Director comments? Seeing none, we're at the point of adjournment. This meeting is adjourned.